I guess we're ready to go.
I think so. We've been in closed session, have just come out and out of closed session, out of a recess, I'd like a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Following which we will take a roll call, hear the invocation, and pledge allegiance.
I'll second it.
Paul McFaber.
Hi.
Opposed?
Do we need a roll call?
Oh, we do a roll call, I'm sorry. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Here.
Mather.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here.
Mary.
Here. The invocation is to be offered by Reverend David Brown from Hillcrest Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for your mercy and for your grace. We thank you for this occasion. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I thank you for the leaders of our city, Lord, for their gifts, their abilities, the wisdom that they bring. God, I pray that tonight, as this business is conducted, that your hand would guide the affairs of this proceeding. Lord, help us to speak with clarity and restraint, to act with wisdom and courage. God, to listen thoughtfully and carefully tonight, and where there is disagreement, that we would do it graciously and with humility. God, again, we lead tonight, recognizing that you are the ultimate authority that guides us in all things, and so may we be renewed and strengthened by your hand tonight in the thought of your presence here among us. Thank you for your goodness. Thank you for how you've been kind to this city. Just continue to guide this proceeding tonight. I pray all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Bless relations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll move to public comments, and I'll just ask for a show of hands if there's anybody out there that wants to address council tonight. Seeing none, I move discussions and presentations of which I know of none. Next item on the agenda is a board appointment to downtown business district. Ten days ago, I told you that I was going to nominate Steve Height to fill the vacant position on the downtown business. I think that's an excellent place for him to serve, and I'd like to have a motion on that nomination.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Yeah, roll call.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda has to do with disposition of out-of-date records. Ms. Sterns has some stuff in the basement she'd like to get rid of. Would you like to speak to that?
Actually, they're not in the basement. They're in an off-site facility over on the old city block.
Oh, yeah.
And if you'll notice, the paperwork that is within the council packet is quite old, and I'm really proud of myself for keeping it safe for that many years, because I think the oldest is 2006, so I actually knew where it was. And so there's some from 2006 in August, and I think some in September, and then the following May. So all of those records are ready to be disposed of, and I just need an action from this council to do so.
I'd like a motion to authorize that disposition.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Now we'll move to approval of minutes. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You do have the Midas touch. Just try.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
And approval of warrants.
I know there will be some questions with regard to warrant somewhere, but I'd like a motion to approve the warrants, and then we'll hear the questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions about specific warrants?
Yes, I had one on page thirty-five on the typewriter maintenance. How many typewriters does that cover?
We got that. So that was three typewriters, all in the police department. I think we have a total of seven or eight in our system, and I am, as of today, because I just recognized this, we're working towards the elimination of typewriters, and so hopefully that they'll all be on future.
We've been.
Yes, that's correct. So, but yeah, they performed work on three typewriters in the police department.
Thank you.
I never imagined that we had a typewriter in the system until I saw Mr. White emailing.
I didn't either.
Any more questions? Get over roll call.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan. Excuse me. Wheeler.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Now we need a motion to go into public hearing with regard to rezoning on Ostrich Drive.
So moved. Second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan. Excuse me. Wheeler.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Now we need a motion to go into public hearing with regard to rezoning on Ostrich Drive.
So moved. Second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny, excuse me, Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Noel, would you like to tell us about this rezoning?
Okay, this is a parcel of land on the south side of town on Ostrich Drive. It came into the city, was annexed in 2003. Part of this ground, or this piece of land, was Zone C1, and the remainder was Zoned RS1. When it was brought into the city, we moved the C1 zoning line to the edge of the parcel, which left the rest of it RS1. Any questions?
And planning and zoning voted against.
Yes, they did.
This rezoning.
Yes, it's voted down.
So this is against Hill.
Yes, therefore, we're here to hear an appeal.
And I'm sure there's several comments on it. Several people want to talk about it.
Okay. Would you talk to us about planning and zoning's thought process?
We started once with a conditional use in an RS zone for a parking lot, and they turned that down. And then they came back next month to rezone it to C1, which a parking lot is legal in C1, and they turned that down. They voted it down.
Is this because there's a lot of residential around this immediate property, or?
At the corner of East Fremont, I mean, West Fremont, and Ostrich Drive or Morgan Road, that is C1. From that point down thirteen hundred and twenty feet, then.
Down Ostrich or Fremont.
Going south on Ostrich Drive, thirteen hundred and twenty feet, it is C1. And then after that, it begins RS1.
Lea, I do, this is one of those areas that we still need to address through the comprehensive plan and rewriting of our code. One of the things is that when things come in, annexed, right, the designation is R1. And it needs to, when it's annexed in, it needs to come in, annexed in, what its intended purpose is for, so that somebody can choose whether or not to annex based on the resistance through the annexation process, not the rezoning. So, because now everybody that has built up around there and lived there for a long time and so forth and so on sees that it's a residential, and therefore that's why the discussion occurred of the planning and zoning. So, but that's, but the reason it has R1 designation is that's by law, local law, it comes, everything that is annexed in automatically comes in as RS1, and we need to address that in the bigger picture, not specifically to the site, because the site very well could have come in as RS1. So I just wanted, but I wanted to use this opportunity to talk.
So when it comes time to vote on this consideration, you want an up or down to accept the recommendation, planning and zoning, right?
Yep.
They recommend?
No.
They fail.
They fail, yes.
You're not, you need an up or down.
On their recommendation that it not be approved.
And another thing that might be a little misleading when he says this is a parking lot, it's a trucking terminal, is what it is.
Yeah.
Which is looking to expand, and it'll be like a seven-day, twenty-four-hour trucks that come in and loading and unloading cars and stuff, and everything that goes with that in pretty much a residential area. But the business exists there now? Yeah, a small business does exist there, but he's looking to expand it down into the residential area.
He's got a truck in. On property that he already owns.
Yeah, he already owns that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think he owns it, yeah.
It ought to be all one track when it was purchased, or? No, it was a couple of different tracks. I've got it here if you want.
Yeah, do you have a map or something? Was that part of?
This is a survey from 2009. Here was the old city limits, right here, and this was Zone C1, okay? When we annexed it, we annexed this and this part down here, which is this part right here. This is the part that's RS1. This came in in 2003, 2003 here, this house in front came in in 2004. Mrs. Gamble, our loan property in 2005. Yeah. So what's the question? This little piece here? This little piece here. When it came in, the middle of it was Zone, this was Zone C1. This came in, and we moved the line, the C1 zoning line, and this remained the rest.
And it sounds like that are true.
And that's what he's wanting to annex now?
No.
Or rezone that commercial.
Show that bill.
Which will build up to a residential property, a home job. Everything around is pretty much residential.
This right here is RS1. This is his, this is his shop back here.
Right.
This is where he's got his business. This is what he wants to change to C1.
Yep.
And he's wanting to build a parking lot for his trucks.
Just to make a lot.
Where is that at?
Here's Oakwood Trailer Park.
Yeah, and the other, the other part, the other, there's your house right in here.
There's a house right here.
Really cool.
Yeah, and there's a big office building here, and it's raw here.
I was here for that zoning plan. I heard all the conversation, so.
We are in public hearing. Is there anybody out here in the audience that has a feeling or comment with regard to this zoning question? Please.
My name is James Hartman. I own Bulldog Trucking. Just like to clear up a couple of things, just to help make your decisions. We were trying earlier to rezone this to be a parking lot slash terminal. We have changed our stance on this, but first of all, we're not like, it's not like a prime situation, and we own ten trucks and not really looking to grow our trucking fleet anymore anyways. It's not really a twelve-twenty-four operation, but, so it's not like that. And being in a residential area, I mean, it's residential and commercial, and there's only two homes right in that neighborhood that it even comes remotely affecting. But we've, one of the things that, we were just really looking to make it a parking lot temporarily.
Would you pick that thing up, hold it a little closer?
We were just actually looking to make it a temporary parking lot for about twelve months or so, because our, really, our future plan is to build some office buildings on there. Going through this process, it seems like we, you know, we don't, we're not here to disrupt people, upset the neighbors or anything like that. So after going through this process, looking at, we have reevaluated our situation. Right now, we just want to zone it commercial, so we can plan on in the next twelve to twenty-four months to start putting some commercial office buildings in there. If you have curiosity about where will we do with the parking lot, behind that lot is a land that's, used to have lagoons on it, and I've been talking with the gentleman that owns the trailer park on purchasing that piece of property back there, and I'll probably move my, the parking lot back in that situation where it's even further back away from anybody and way out of the way. But once again, it's, we're not looking like a place that has a hundred trucks coming in and out. I own ten trucks, so, I mean, that's kind of what it is.
Would this, these office buildings be for your purposes or rental purposes?
Both. It's quite a big piece of land there. I don't need all that. Maybe one day I will, but not, I don't see it to be for me solely, no.
Counsel, have any questions?
Mayor.
Will this be paid?
Yeah, when we do put the building, yeah, it has to be, but, you know, I mean, we're talking about nice office buildings, so I mean, you know, like to try to continue growing like what they're doing there, where Mr. Headley owns Subway and that situation there, you know, nice buildings like that, continue to grow the city out. Since we've, since we've taken over that piece of property, I purchased that piece of property about five, six years ago, and we've done nothing but improve it. Matter of fact, last year, spent $200,000. I mean, when I bought the land there with the buildings on there, it appraised for $450,000. We had appraised this last, at the end of summer, appraised for a million dollars because all the renovations we've done there, you know. I'm trying to continue to do it, you know, even though I'm in the trucking business, I take great pride in my business and the representation of it.
So what you're telling us tonight, for the purpose of that land is different than what, just last week, you had gone to planning and zoning, that you've kind of changed your...
Yes, because I've been, you know, learning a little bit more and more about how, what's going on and stuff like that, and seeing the demands of my neighbors and stuff. I mean, there's, they said there's some lagoons, old lagoons that operated the mobile park behind me, and for the most part, I'm not an EPA specialist, but, you know, because there's lagoons, I don't think you really can build anything on there for a long time, and, you know, so we'll probably, you know, put the parking lot out there. But we're not even talking about much more than the trucks that are already in there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Would this need to go back? Since he's changing.
Only statement I'd make, permissive is permissive, just so you're aware that if it's permissive use and it's rezoned, it's permissive use.
For anything.
Yeah, permissive. It means he has a right to do it.
Whatever involves.
Whatever he wants, because it's permissive use. So just keep that in mind.
I'd like to ask a question of our planning and zoning.
Okay.
Has the planning and zoning changed their mind on this? At the first meeting you had, you voted not to do this, is that correct?
Both meetings, both meetings, they voted, voted it down.
Couldn't hear you.
Both meetings, they did not pass the issue.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Jackie Gamble, and I own the property just south of Mr. Hartman's property. I also have my comments in writing, if you would like to follow along.
All right, please.
I would like to say that I appreciate Mr. Hartman, and he does appear that he is interested in what we have to say as neighbors, but my concern still is, just as was just mentioned, that C1 is still going to be C1, and he can do whatever on it. And he has changed his mind several times. So let me say that I appreciate everything that Mr. Hartman is doing, that he wants to expand his business, and I think that he has a good business opportunity there. The only issue that I have with his business is where he wants to locate it, and specifically if it is the truck terminal. The fact that this rezoning attempt has failed and been turned down twice by Lebanon Planning and Zoning hopefully has a strong impact on your decision tonight. All the property in this area has always been residential. When it was originally annexed into the city, the trailer park and Mr. Lillard's property, where the house sits in front of where his, his terminal is now, had to be all Zone C1, because that was the only zoning allowed for residential dwellings in a trailer park. So it is all residential, it's just different types of residential. All other land in this area was brought into the city as residential. As a property owner in this area for approximately thirty-three years, I would like for it to stay as a residential community. If this property is rezoned C1, it will be a very small island in the middle of what otherwise is all residential, and will completely change the neighborhood and drastically reduce property values for property owners. This also comes at a time when Lebanon is in the process of building a new junior high school within a mile. I would assume that when the school district was looking for property to build a new junior high, they took into consideration that there are very few areas in Lebanon to expand with more potential residential building opportunities than in our area along Ostrich Drive. It certainly should be expected that more residential housing will want to spring up in this area once the school is finished. The first time Mr. Hartman approached planning and zoning in May, he was requesting a variance that would allow a parking lot on property zoned R1. It was turned down by the P&amp;Z, as they recognized that a semi-truck terminal does not fit the definition of a parking lot. In June, Mr. Hartman came back to the planning and zoning to request a zoning change from R1 to C1. C1 would allow a truck terminal and a used parking, a used car lot. The planning and zoning voted to not allow the zoning change for the same reasons I would ask the Lebanon Council to also vote against this zoning change. When reading the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance for the City of Lebanon, it discusses the need for varying zoning districts, and specifically states in Section 1B3 that the regulations are intended to preserve and protect existing property uses and values against adverse or unharmonious adjacent uses. I understand this to mean that rezoning should not happen if the rezoning will cause harm or decrease in value to the surrounding existing properties. After thirty-three years of owning this property and living there for most of the first twenty years, I now have this property up for sale. The realtor has stated to the planning and zoning in the last meeting that if this zoning change is permitted, it will have a serious detrimental effect on my property value. The serious detrimental effect on my property value will occur because no one will want to buy this residential property next to property zone C1, especially when the proposed use is a commercial semi-truck terminal. In the zoning regulations, it states that a truck-bus terminal is permitted use in C1, even though C1 supposedly only allows commercial uses that are not obnoxious or offensive due to emission of noise, odor, dust, gas, smoke, or vibration. If you decide to vote to approve the zoning change, a commercial use that is obnoxious or offensive due to the emission of noise, odor, dust, gas, smoke, and vibration is exactly what we will have in our residential area. Which of you here would like to sit in your front yard if you were facing an area right next door to something like the Indy Truckport with diesel semis running night and day? Would you want to listen to the continual noise of motors, constant feel of the vibrations of trucks running, and always have the smell of diesel fumes and smoke in the air? Mr. Hartman does not want to pave the lot either, that's what he had said in the last two meetings, so in these hot days, you can breathe the dust too. It will be flying also as the trucks move around. If you look at the, all the other permissive uses of C1 general commercial district, the uses were designed to be resident-friendly and are compatible and well-suited to coexist next to the residential zoning, but a semi-truck terminal would not be, and there is no, if he gets C1, there's no decision there. He can do whatever he wants. So to summarize, I am requesting that the Lebanon Council vote no to changing the zoning from R1 to C1 at 2750 Ostrich Drive, because Lebanon zoning laws were developed with the specific intent to not allow zoning changes to happen that would adversely affect or be unharmonious with existing property uses. I have been the property owner just south of this property for at least thirty-three years. My property values, as well as all other neighboring properties, will decrease dramatically in value if this zoning is changed because of the adverse effect on our existing residential property use. Based on the purpose and intent of the zoning regulations, Lebanon Planning and Zoning has already voted no twice to changing the use of this land to a commercial semi-truck terminal and used car lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here now that would like to address this zoning change?
I'm, I'm laying still, I live right directly across from this. I just have one comment. I don't understand what the, not twenty-four hours a day or seven days a week is. I live right across from it, and I'd have to disagree with that. There's traffic there at different times, all the time.
Say that again, Lynn, please.
Well, it was commented, it wasn't seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. It, trucks are coming going, weekends and days and nights all too.
Currently, right now?
Yep.
That's, there's trucks in.
That's, there's trucks in and out of there already, and has been for several years?
Yeah. That, yeah, that's pretty well it, yeah.
Do you offer this as a reason to vote against the planning and zoning decision?
Go along with planning and zoning.
You want us to go along with planning and zoning?
Get them rejected, yes.
I'm rejected.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else? Can I have a motion come out of public hearing? Second.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Now we move to ordinances, and we'll visit our old friend, electric service charges. Council Bill 4111 is the second reading of the ordinance we passed two weeks ago. Any further discussion?
So this ordinance goes further than just a 10% increase, or, I was reading the article in the LDR, and it had explained new rate structures. Is that?
The rate structure is compacted a little bit. It offers a 5% increase now, 5% increase in October, and consideration of an additional 1% a year from now.
Mostly correct. October and April.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then, yes, we, we did change, we did change some of the rate structure components, and we cleaned up a lot of the language so that it's more understandable. So I think it's cleaner.
So the industrial customers are getting a 10% increase, or less than 10?
Everybody's getting 10% increase.
More?
Everybody's getting 10% increase. Just, it's just a better, cleaner rate structure.
Any other comments? Can I have a motion?
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
No.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Council Bill 4111 has at long last been approved and becomes ordinance 5362. Now we move to first and second readings. And starting with Council Bill 4112, which deals with the final plat for the Denny's subdivision.
Uh, this is a combination of about three or four parcels of land, part of it being on Cedar Crest Drive, and it's for the Denny's Restaurant.
Are they gonna need some of those to expand, to, to build on some of that property back there, or is it for another driveway entrance?
What we decided in P&amp;Z last Thursday, they will have an entrance that goes north and hits Cherokee, turns right. The two lots on Cedar Crest will be parking only with the fence.
That service entrance has been removed that was there.
That goes out on Cedar Crest.
Any questions? Can I have a motion?
Second.
Who made the first, I'm sorry. Okay, this particular ordinance needs an amendment, because in the awareness statements, it states that Anderson and Associates Consulting Engineers were the ones that requested the plat, and that's not correct. It's Airheart Properties. So I need a motion to amend the bill.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Now, can I have a motion on the amended ordinance?
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Move on to second.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Council Bill 4112 has been approved and becomes ordinance 5363. Council Bill 4113 deals with the final plat of Consey Winfrey Acres, Phase 2 at Ashley Park subdivision.
This is the Nazarene Church property, and it's gonna be divided into two lots, and it joins, it's gonna be Phase 2 of Ashley Winfrey Park.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Move on to second. Elmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Council Bill 4113 has been approved and is ordinance 5364. Council Bill 4114 deals with a rock hauling contract, and I'd like to address a question that was raised from the public, while back, very legitimate question when this was advertised, saying that, do we not have enough trucks to haul rocks ourselves? And of course, we do have enough trucks to haul rocks ourselves, but when we're busy, we don't have enough people all the time to move those trucks. I'd like a motion on those ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Council Bill 4114 has passed and is ordinance 5365. Council Bill 4115 deals with the subject you talked about in your work session last Thursday night, and that's the ATM machines in the CCC. Does anything change, Mr. Wilson?
One, one machine. The only thing we've done is that we've put in there that there's no minimum requirement of how many transactions per month.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Was this put out for bid?
I contacted several banks in town, and it's under, matter of fact, we're getting paid $50 a month. So we've knocked it out, but we contacted every bank in town. The only US bank contacted me from Galen, Portland, Oregon to discuss it.
So it was not put out?
It was not put out for bid.
But they were all contacted?
But everybody was contacted. Sent a letter out to every bank in town.
But this is an independent firm?
Yes.
So the other independent firms weren't given the opportunity to bid on it? We could begin $500 a month as opposed to $50?
I took everybody that contacted me in the past, all the cards, and called everybody that was there. It was mainly banks here in town, local, and this guy.
Okay.
And most, and two of the four banks recommended this guy.
And so, just let me clarify one thing, and that's a perception that we have even staff. Formal bids is $25,000 and above, right? When we solicit information, that is going through a bidding process. So the fact that multiple vendors were solicited to provide a service, I do believe we have met the requirement of bidding it, and we had only one interested party. So I would not say we did not bid. I would say we did bid it, and we did that by, through an inquiry of, of our local institutions. And it's, yeah, it's a, it's a verbal bid for $50 a month.
But we did have a local bank that did have an ATM in there at one time, and they took it out because of the lack of use, and it wasn't profitable for them.
Correct.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
You got a motion already?
I do.
Okay, go.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
No.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second to second.
White?
No.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yeah.
So I get to vote?
Yes.
I did issue, didn't I?
Yes. Council Bill 4115 is approved and is ordinance 5366. Council Bill 4116 deals with an agreement for auditing services and recommends the continuation with the officer CPA firm.
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions?
Yes, are all three firms qualified to perform the audit?
Sure.
So what's the benefit of paying $50,000 extra for the officer firm?
So we, we scored it, and the, if you, if you look at, I guess I'd want a caveat, my, the, the other firm that's considerably lower lacks, in my, my opinion, lacks the expertise and the complexity of our organization. And so when you look at, at similar, when you look at the like, so municipalities are like, I agree with that, the size and scope, she does a little village, and, and I think one other small community, which to me does not represent the $50 million corporation that we are. I will say that one of the things that we did do, understanding kind of, we had two top, and then we had one that scored much lower. I have, we have entered into a one-year agreement, and it is our intent to put this back out on the market again, at the ending of our audit this year. So we'll have our audit in October, and then we're gonna go right back out on the street. And so we had, we bid it out as a three-year, I worked with a one-year, so that we could get this audit in the books, so that then we can put it back out on the street and then go. I mean, we had, I was hoping to see more folks enter, but I do think that with a one-year agreement, I, I would rather stay with who we're currently using, just for ease of getting this audit done, and then let's go back out to the market, starting with auditing of 16, excuse me, so that we can then get into a three- or five-year agreement, and then we'll have a little bit more time to put it out on the street to see if we can get more solicit, more folks. I was, I personally was disappointed in the number of respondents we had, so.
So it just advertised in the newspaper, the local newspaper?
No, we put it out through GFPA and some of the other things, so. But again, I, I think just the tight turnaround time, because, you know, the, the, last year we, we punted this, and I said not, we're not gonna punt it this year, because, you know, we always seem to have a reason not to put it out, so I wanted to put it out, because it meant a lot, so we put it out, we put it out. And I was, and we had two, one, two that came in really strong that I felt could really do a good job, and then we had one that definitely had a valued price on it, but when you really looked through the submittal, that, that true size and scope isn't there. And so, so the staff recommended to go with the larger one. I didn't think that increased price made sense, so my, so one of the changes that I made that's presented to you is, instead of doing a three-year contract as bid, we're doing a one-year contract with an option to renew, just for our own safe, safe payment. But it's my intent to come November to put this right back out on the street, so that we can go and then see what happens from that, so.
Why would we put out a bid from somebody we didn't think was qualified then? If, if we didn't?
We advertised for bids, and they did it.
But what?
Anybody can offer a bid, as Mather's trying to say.
Did you want to add something that hadn't been said? Okay.
So.
I just seen that look.
So I, I guess you're anticipating the fact that when we put this out with the longer lead time, we'll get more respondents?
I'm hoping. I mean, I mean, that's one of the things is, you know, we've, we've had this auditor for a while, and so I really thought, and I, I mean, I know some folks in the industry, and I really thought, I was like, this is, please submit, please submit. So I'm hoping, that's what I'm hoping.
But not, but not necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, we can only, we can only judge what is submitted. And so we did, and like I said, I think this is, I tried to parse it everywhere I could, just so that we at least went back out to the market, because to me, this and the banking, which the banking will be coming to at the next meeting, but this and the banking had been a long time since we'd actually solicited for those services, so I wanted to get that done. And so that's why my compromise is, and she was, so Lana just said she was the only one to bid last time, so I'm hoping that we can get some things kind of improved so that we can.
What was the bid last time?
That's been so, I don't remember what that was.
You mean cost-wise?
Yes.
I don't know.
It was the last year, I can't remember.
Uh, well, see, it wasn't, see, that's, one of the reasons, one of the reasons I wanted to go back out is because we watched our costs elevate. I've now got it back in check. So that was part of one of the agreements that I wanted to do, is I wanted to get an agreement on the cost, on the, for the audit itself, then the hourly rate, so that we can get an agreement for that, because we are outside of our agreement. So that's why I really wanted to do something. And so, so in my mind, we're improving the situation we're in, and like I said, the 38 is less than we paid last year, sort of that. Last couple of years, we've paid in excess of 40 or 50. Hope that clarified anything.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
I, I haven't.
Oh, you got that, okay.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
No.
White?
No.
Move on to second.
Oh, wait.
Wait a minute.
No, it passes here.
Oh, yeah, for the first reading, the second reading. I'm sorry, did you say that?
Move on to second.
Second to second.
So you don't require a majority?
Not, not to pass it to a second reading. You will, in the second reading, require
Elmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
No.
White?
No.
Mather?
Yes.
Council Bill 4116 is approved and becomes ordinance 5362.
It failed.
What?
It failed. There wasn't a majority of the council that voted in affirmation of the.
We got two negative votes, right?
We need five to pass four bids. We need five to pass four bids.
All right, we'll go back to the drawing board.
I'll just need a second.
Council Bill forty-one seventeen deals with the contractors or environmental services people, which you just heard discussed in closed session, and I'd like a motion.
So move.
Second.
Any further questions?
Yes. Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Second.
Second reading.
Yeah, motion to, second, second.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
No.
White.
No.
Mather.
Yes.
Council Bill forty-one sixteen is approved and becomes ordinance fifty-three.
The mayor, it failed.
What?
It failed. There wasn't a majority of the council that voted in affirmation of the.
We got two negative votes, right?
We need five to pass four bids.
All right, we'll go back to the drawing board.
I'll just need a second.
Council Bill forty-one seventeen deals with the contractors or environmental services people, which you just heard discussed in closed session, and I'd like a motion.
So move.
Second.
Any further questions?
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Council Bill forty-one seventeen is passed and is ordinance fifty-three sixty-eight. Council Bill forty-one eighteen deals with approval of, I think Harwood.
Not Harwood.
Avenue, approval. Would you like to speak to that? On the agenda, it says Harwood.
Oh, yeah. This is just following along with our street maintenance master plan that you guys have approved. The only thing we did change from, from our previous capital improvement plan was we added that section in between five and Clark. It was getting in bad shape and we wanted to go ahead and just make a complete road improvement there. All of it will be milled out and overlaid with hot asphalt. The section there in the pink, it will get some stormwater improvements done. There's limestone in that area and what's caused that, that road to fail prematurely was a lot of water stays up underneath it, so we're going to jackhammer some of that, that limestone out and, and put some drainage in there to get that water out from under it.
Now, does your planning include something that will alleviate the spring that wants to come up from that curve on Harwood?
Yeah, that, yeah. We'll get that water out from under that road, yeah.
And just a point, one forty-three is what's in the budget, so when he said the change from the capital improvement plan, that was the twenty-sixteen capital improvement plan. This is what you guys allocated and allocated and obviously we hope to even come in under this, but it's based on, you know, see what the public.
Richard, the, the section closest there to, to highway five in the blue, why, why did that go to pot so quick, seem like?
We haven't, we've done some corriges on that. What, what's happened was is there wasn't a whole lot of base rock put up underneath that road, from what I understand, it was back in the nineties and the street department was asked to move that project along and they didn't, they didn't do their due.
They moved it along.
They moved it along.
So are you fixing that or are you just going to overlay it?
Yes, yeah. We're milling off and then we'll, we'll fix whatever needs to be fixed to make a twenty year product.
Well, you say you're milling that off, but that's there to put more base rock and you'll have to take that up.
Yeah.
You'll rebuild that portion.
Yeah, we'll end up rebuilding if it need be.
So it will be a twenty-year.
Yeah, well, most generally a overlay will be close to a twenty-year product.
It wasn't anticipated as much traffic.
That is true.
As there is.
That is true.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
No.
White.
No.
Mather.
Yes.
Council Bill forty-one eighteen is approved and becomes ordinance fifty-three sixty-nine. We'll move to the first reading of the zoning request that you just heard discussed in a public hearing. So what's your pleasure? I would not personally be upset if we moved to table this to another meeting so we can think about it and, and question our conscience.
I think we have a recommendation from zoning and planning, I think it would be appropriate to follow up on it now.
Yeah, I'd agree.
This is an appeal process, so it's, you're not making anything related to planning and zoning to a separate independent act. You have to answer the appeal. If it gets an affirmative vote, then it can move and ultimately file action disposition at the second meeting. But you, you are doing an independent act because again, as long as there's going to be to clean up, you're, you're acting, not in a legislative body at this point, but in an administrative body, hearing an appeal from what planning and zoning did. Just keep that in mind.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate after we've closed the public hearing for us to take this opportunity to come back as the mayor suggested and have an opportunity to drive by and look at the property? Or is that, that can't be done outside of the public hearing?
No, the public hearing's over. We're, you're, you're in an appeal, you're acting as an appeals board at this point, so it's not even a legislative act that you're doing, so.
Well, this is an ordinance.
I understand, I totally understand it's an ordinance, but there, you can pass ordinances as a governing body, you can pass ordinance both that are legislative and administrative. And so you are, you, this is, this is specific to Lebanon, so we're following the procedure as lined out in our code, but I just want you guys to know that, but again, if that's the direction you want to head, if you want to pause, then I would say it's an affirmative vote for a second read. If you want to deny the appeal, then it will not get an affirmative vote and it will not get a second reading. And if you want to outright approve it, then you would get an affirmative reading, affirmative vote this time and an affirmative vote two weeks from now. Those are your three options, but.
But if it, if it's. Due process, you would need to act tonight on the first reading.
And if it fails tonight.
There'd be no second.
There's, there's no second.
Then the appeal's over, but to get, to get some of the concerns that people have just mentioned, I'd try to give different off, off, alternatives.
Well, I, I kind of feel at this point, I don't have as much information as planning and zoning was presented to, to make an informed decision, as in what I heard tonight.
That's why it goes to planning and zoning.
That's why it goes to planning and zoning, so I would probably defer my vote to how they voted. But on the other hand, I don't see much difference in what's already occurring on this property and zoning it and giving him a little bit more space to expand his business and how it's really going to change that area that much. Those are the questions I would have.
One of the main things that's changing is bringing that from back in the back, bringing it down here into this lot, this closer to the road, but closer always to these other homes and things. That's what, that's what.
But that's what I don't understand, so I would need to understand it more to make an informed.
I was present at the first zoning and planning on this and I thought the zoning planning did an excellent job of scrutinizing it. I think they really did a good job of making an informed decision, so I have no problem with their, their decision and their recommendation.
And it has been her twice.
Would you like to make a motion?
No.
Well, we're going to have to.
I'll make a motion, we vote on it, as it stated here.
Well, it's, yeah.
Bellwork?
It's just a regular word. The motion has to be in the affirmative. The motion has to be in the affirmative.
Right, I understand that.
Motion's in the affirmative.
Right, and then we can vote.
Then you vote.
Against it.
And it, it's something that'll be voted on two weeks from now, again, when the full body is complete, so.
Well, not necessarily.
Not necessarily. Unless it's in the affirmative tonight.
I'll second it.
You'll second what? The motion that we vote?
Is motion, yeah.
Are you ready for a roll call?
I don't think so. Give me a clearer motion, not one that we vote, let's have one that we vote in a certain way.
Vote on the ordinance.
We're going to vote on the ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Crabtree, are you making a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'm making a motion to vote, just like it says right here, to leave it residential instead of, that's what it says on this here.
I just, we need a motion to approve the.
All motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay.
Dennis.
Okay.
Okay, Dennis is second. Now, if you would like to uphold, if you would like to uphold the recommend, if you, if you want to vote the same way planning and zoning, then you would be voting no on the motion. And if you want to vote to change the zoning, you would be voting a yes.
Any further questions? Can I have a roll call?
Mather.
No.
Elmore.
No.
Wheeler.
No.
Suter.
No.
Crabtree.
No.
White.
No.
That motion has, or appeal has failed and we move to old business of which I know of none.
Yes, mayor, I believe the pay raises are old business. When I voted for the pay raise, I was assuming all employees were getting the pay raise. I think there was a, there's an interpretation issue now between staff and at least me, I don't know about the other council members, on whether the pay raise was meant for all employees or just certain employees. I don't, does that take a motion to resolve that issue or?
Not for discussion.
No, not at this time. It's, it's not on the agenda.
What was already voted on.
What?
I voted for a pay raise for all employees. I don't know what the rest of the council members did. The pay raise went into effect July first and it's my understanding that all employees are receiving the pay raise that was unanimously voted on by council.
Again, that's not a subject that's on this agenda. If you would like to give me some specifics, it'll be on the agenda two weeks from now.
My request is that staff follow the ordinance that was passed. Wait, do we have to vote on it twice?
I think that the staff's position that this is a matter of negotiations is appropriate for those people that are negotiating.
What does our legal counsel say about the ordinance that we passed? Did we pass the ordinance authorizing all employees receive a three percent raise?
I think it's subject to negotiations. You have certain unions and certain representatives, those representatives have to be dealt with according to law. Certain employees are represented by union, certain employees aren't, so.
But we have the latitude, we have the latitude, the legal latitude to go ahead and give a three percent raise without negotiation?
No, you have to negotiate that through law with the unions representative of the union. I, I'm not a labor attorney, but you have to negotiate with the unions, that, that would be one area of negotiation.
And I went. You're aware of the advice we received earlier?
Yes, I was, I was present. I believe the advice I'm giving you is consistent with the advice you've gotten before from the other council who's not here.
I, I see it as in conflict. I'd understood we don't need to negotiate, that we can choose to give a three percent raise.
Or thirty-three percent raise.
But you, you would have to choose to do that with the union representative of the, of the employees that are represented by union.
So we can do that independent of the rest of the negotiations?
That's one area of negotiation. You pay there being number, there are days off, a number of areas that you negotiate. I think the example was used, you start with a blank sheet, so whatever goes on the blank sheet can be negotiated.
So we can negotiate, reach a settlement on salary ahead of the rest of the negotiations?
You'd have to decide what order you want to negotiate things in.
You're going to finalize that in agreement and I don't believe there's agreement presented in front of you at this point.
Did the rest of the council understand previous council to say that we could not give a three percent raise without negotiation?
I did. I understand when you're dealing with your unionized employees that that is all part of the bargaining.
Process.
Process on their pay raise.
But I specifically asked whether it was standard business in other municipalities. The answer was no.
You did ask that tonight, you did ask that tonight, but I thought it still, my understanding was you can go ahead and choose to give the raise, but it has to be done through the union.
Right, yeah.
It still has to go through the union.
We've got a binding contract right now with the various union organizations and both sides are bound by that. I did not understand the same way you did not understand that the three percent raise applied to the general employees and not to the union members. I think that was unclear when we voted the last time.
So how do we fix this? Can we ask a union tomorrow if they will agree to a three percent raise for FY sixteen and we're done or?
I think it won't be that easy to process.
You guys, you guys have a negotiating team and we are negotiating the contracts on all of them, so I, I think let us do the work that we're, we're employed to do.
Well, I'm not willing to let it go for three years while we try to work out our We already budgeted the three percent. I was expecting all employees to receive three percent and I just found out this week that, I mean, you're saying wait two or three years.
We have, we have meetings set up with the unions to negotiate, so we, they are on the calendar, we are negotiating.
And who controls the agenda?
Uh, both, both parties. Both parties.
So can we give you direction to put the 3% pay raise at the top?
I. Do whatever you want.
No, I'd say our attorney, that we pay to handle these situations, we would have to go what he would recommend.
You have not.
He did not give a recommendation.
At, at this point, the governing body has not given legislative act to talk, to give direction in negotiations in the two contracts that we have currently negotiated with three different bargaining unions. If that is a different policy that the council would like to take, then it needs to let me and its city councillor know that, so that we can cease all negotiations until we understand what is the priority for this body. If we wanna continue with the status quo, so that we can hurry up and try to get expedited agreements, then we will do that. But either way, if we're not acting in the, on the interest of this council, then we will cease negotiations until we come up with a different plan.
So it just takes a vote on direction, a vote on the ordinance, what does it take to get?
I would also probably want a full complement of council here if you're gonna take that, if you're gonna undo four years' worth of policy in one motion that wasn't even on the agenda.
But it was already voted on.
I'm done, I'm done, I'm done.
We passed the ordinance.
Well, again, it's not something that we're gonna vote on tonight, because it's not on the agenda tonight. If you want to talk with me during the next two weeks, we can consider something that we can put on the agenda.
Okay, well, my viewpoint is that the ordinance that we passed on the budget is not being followed, so, I mean.
I understand.
How long do we go on committing illegal activities violating ordinance?
Was there a question in that last room?
Are you suggesting we go two more weeks?
Yeah.
Not following the ordinance?
Not, I'm suggesting that we go two more weeks not following your interpretation of the ordinance.
Well, I know what I voted on, so.
Okay.
Cleo knows what he voted on, and on down the line here. That's all I had.
Any other old business? Remove staff comments. Chief? Chief?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to mention a couple of things. Each year, my staff spends time testing over 8,000 feet of hose and going out and testing 1,200 hydrants throughout the city, and we, we're still continuing with that process, and, and I think the staff is to be commended through the weather. We've had the rain and the heat, they continue to do that, and we're on track and on target to get that work done and the time I've allotted, and I think they should be commended for that.
We did receive some damages to various infrastructure through the chain of events over the past week or so, and we will be meeting with our, our SEMA representative on Wednesday to kinda do some site visits and start the process of filing the necessary paperwork to, to see if we can get some reimbursement. So, looks like we got somewhere around $50,000 to $55,000 on the street. On the water, wastewater side is somewhere around $20,000, and we're still adding up on the electric.
On the power road project, uh.
How long do you think it'll take to get that fixed, or get that one lane of traffic back to the grid?
We'll be looking at that tomorrow to, to get a path forward on, on what we're going to do for the improvements there. Correct that.
I just want to remind everyone about the fly-in this weekend, Sunday, at the airport, 12 to 4. And if you have an extra $500 in your pocket, you can get a flight on B-15.
B-24.
25.
I thought it was 400.
Yeah, I thought it was too 400.
I had a new staff member that started today. Her name's Allison Winfrey. She's taking Gwen's position as Gwen retired. So if you see a, a new face and a new voice on the phone when you call in, then that would be her, and we're glad to have her aboard. You will be seeing some of her. She will be my backup whenever I'm gone, and so she'll be doing minutes for this council, and so she will be attending some meetings to get accustomed to our activity, and the process is here. And then also, I'd just like to congratulate Lee Ann for her son's win at the state amateur tournament, and I think that's great.
Thank you.
How's your credit card situation going in collection?
It's going great. It's not, um, so far, the data doesn't show that it is detouring people from being on the cutoff. We thought that people would utilize it more to prevent that, however, they're using it to get their utilities turned back on, and.
Push it to the last minute?
It, it's, um, we have a cutoff at 5:00, the day before cutoff. We have some that will go in online a few hours after 5:00 to pay, which they're subject to reconnections at that point. And, uh, just, you know, if they got it in a few hours earlier, then they wouldn't have to deal with that. But maybe as time goes on and we've had it a little bit longer, people will become a little bit more familiar with it. We're really starting to, uh, we're really trying to push the, the e-billing as well, and I've got some ideas on that, but I won't speak about it at this time.
Two items. Number one, MML registration has opened up, so if you're interested in going, it is the week of the 21st, so.
Of September.
Of September, so, um, we have held some hotel rooms, but it's really good professional development and peers all over the state that, you know, like yourselves, it convenes to talk about issue support to Missouri municipal. It's the 20th through the 23rd, so if you're interested, let myself or Ben know so we can get you registered. Registration does fill up fast, and, and it is in Kansas City, but it's a, it is a very good professional development opportunity for council, and it is for council, so. The other item is probably in the next week or so, we will have the concrete paver taking delivery, and so you will, we're gonna, we've found some spots that we're gonna do some training on, and, and so if, once that gets up and running and it's out there, I will be contacting you guys, so you can see a live demo, because I think this is an investment that we're gonna be proud of for many, many years to come, so I'm excited to see that it's coming here at a timely manner, and we'll be able to do a couple of streets in a hurry, so I'm excited about that. So, um, other than that, we're just busier than ever right now, so that, that's a good thing, and we're seeing, uh, positive growth in, in pretty much every aspect, so it's, it's been a good, good couple of months. Let that all take questions.
Mr. Brown?
I have no comments.
Mr. Phil?
Wow. Normally, I come back, I just jumped, yeah.
Obviously, with the weather, it's been challenging, Mo, and we're trying to step on top of it as best we can. If anybody sees any issues, please bring it to our attention, we're trying to catch up as quick as we can, guys, I apologize. However, that being said, the Boswell Aquatic Center's having an awesome year even with the weather. Attendance is way up from last year, don't have an explanation for that, but it is up, so that's awesome to, to see that, and I'll be with Richard on Wednesday talking about damaged Boswell. As you can imagine, suffered some pretty bad damage, um, kind of early to tell what some of the other parks did, because it's a little more hidden than Boswell, but the baseball field at Boswell was probably in the worst shape I have ever seen it in all my years with parks, I mean, to the point where driving a tractor with a box plate over with unloaded back tires on the box plate, they had that bigger ruts in. So Boswell probably took 20, 20, $30,000 worth of damage from this, from stores, not necessarily for one day, but over the whole period of time, it's kinda rough, so, got a whole lot of good with Route 66 and some other permits we wanted to repair.
That brings us to council, and I'll start over here. Mr. Suter?
Where are we on the Washington Street repaving project?
We got the JSPs from our engineer sent to MODOT. I'm suspecting that, that MODOT will move it through their, their channels, that was the last thing. We had to end up inspecting the sidewalk support to comply with the ADA. There was, from the time that we had put the sidewalks in, like six months after that, the, the, the standards had changed, so we had to hire a consultant to go in and, and work that, and they, they submitted that report and also the JSPs, and so it's in MODOT's court, and I would suspect it'll probably be October moving through their channels.
Can we stay on top of that to try to get that in?
I, I keep, I'm communicating with MODOT probably a couple times a month at a minimum on the three projects we've got working right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes, I, I just read an article the other day in the Daily Record about the Route 66 Park, or some of the park board members thought that we were going a little extravagant on that over there. The Nelson family heirs has made very clear, when we sold the Nelson Education Center, that part of that money was to be used for that, for that project, and I think that we wanna make sure that that's done, to honor those people.
Mr. White?
Yes, I'd ask that, a future council work session, that we look at our acquisition policy.
Of what policy?
Our acquisition policy.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Nothing?
I'd like to echo what Chief Snyder had to say about the fire department. I saw them out on some rather rainy days doing hydrant checking, and I think that's commendable.
Thank you. That brings us to the mayor, and since Mrs. Hurney isn't here, I'll say what she would have said. It's a pleasure to see all the people out there. We appreciate your attendance tonight, and I'm open to a motion to adjourn. Second.